Hello and welcome to the Wallingford Board of Education meeting. Tonight is Monday, January 22nd and the time is 6:30 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Lavelle, if you could please do a roll call?
Yes. Mr. Dory?
Here.
Ms. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Reynis? Dr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Here.
Dr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mrs. Rusashi?
Here.
Mr. Vado? Nine members present and voting.
Thank you so much. Moving to item number four on our agenda. I'd like to welcome up our student board representatives. We'll start with Lyman Hall. Haley, if you can come up and give us a report. Thanks so much for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me again tonight. We started off January with the first having no school because of our winter break. And then we had a few application workshops after school in the school counseling office on the second and the ninth. The 10th, we had office hours that followed a special bell schedule. The 12th was an ASTE application and it was due by 2 o'clock. The 15th, we had no school because Martin Luther King Day. The 18th was the Lyman Hall PTAC. The 19th, the second quarter was supposed to end, but today was the last day since the snow days, it got pushed back. The 23rd was another after-school application workshop. The 24th, again, office hours following a special bell schedule. The 25th, there's a two-hour early release day. And the 30th, the quarter two report cards are due and there's another after-school application workshop.
Thank you so much, Haley. Appreciate your report. If I could invite Leah and Emma to come up and talk to us about Mark T. Sheehan, please?
Hello and thank you for having us again tonight. Sheehan is looking forward to many exciting events this upcoming month. On February 4th, the junior class will have completed selecting their class schedule for the next school year as the portal to do so will close. On February 5th, National School Counseling Week begins. On February 12th, the sophomore class will have an assembly where they will hear about the classes they have the opportunity to participate in next year. The same day, the portal to pick the classes will open for them. Additionally, the winter sports are about halfway through their seasons and we have seen great success for all teams, including boys' and girls' basketball, hockey, indoor track, and swim and dive. We are looking forward to the rest of their seasons.
Continuing on through February, on the 19th, the sophomore scheduling portal closes. Also on the 19th is President's Day, so there's going to be no school. On the 20th, a system-wide PTAC meeting is happening. On the 22nd, the third interim ends. And then on the 26th, the freshman course selection assembly will be held in the auditorium during fourth period. And the freshman scheduling portal will open that day. And then also, our second semester starts tomorrow. Thank you for having us again.
Thank you so much, Leah and Emma. Very exciting with all of the application workshops and the informative things as we look forward to what's happening next year in Wallingford Public Schools and beyond. So thanks so much for your report. And you're welcome to leave. I know you probably have a very rigorous schedule, so you're welcome to stay as well, but no pressure. We do not have any presentations or awards this evening, so moving forward, I would like to go to public comment. You don't see anyone? Am I correct in that? Perfect. Moving right along. We are going to go to item number seven, the Consent Agenda. So I would like to make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda 7.1 through 7.6. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The Consent Agenda passes. Thank you so much. We did not have any items removed from the Consent Agenda, so moving to item number nine on our agenda, I'd like to pass it over to you, Mrs. Passeretti.
Thank you, Dr. Roscoe. So I... This is kind of loud. So I'd like to report that we did have a very generous donation in the amount of $7,000 to the Wallingford Public Schools Food Service Department. And this donation comes from a foundation called the F. Curtis Thrall and Susan B. Thrall Foundation. And that was donated to us through the co-trustee of the Thrall Foundation, Ms. Margaret Ransom. And I did just... Because it is kind of nice when we know about the individuals who donate the money that goes to our schools. So I did look up the Thrall Foundation. The Thrall Foundation exists to benefit students who might be under a privilege and just to give them an opportunity for college, so they do scholarships. So anybody who's watching, who is a student, who is interested in getting some scholarships, the Thrall Foundation does give quite a lot of scholarships to students. And they also donate to schools in the area, specifically in our area, Connecticut. So we thank the Thrall Foundation and again, Ms. Ransom, for identifying Wallingford Public Schools. We will definitely use these funds to further the free and reduced lunches that we do offer to our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti, and thank you for that background information. Always nice to learn where the donations are coming from. Moving to item number 10 on our agenda, we're going to go into the committee reports. Mr. Ross, if you could please give us an update on ACES as you're our board representative?
We had a meeting last week and we got the executive director's report and he talked about bid approval letter from 88 Bassett Street, North Haven, for Phase 1 or 2 abatement site and building construction and playground relocation. We also heard in the physical... We approved a physical report subject to audit. We also approved the human capital development report. Mr. Cuvera reported there were eight transfer position changes, four resignations, six leaves, one retirement, and no termination. We also heard from Operation Early at Head Start Report from Mr. William Rice. And on their old business, there was no old business, new business. We possible action to approve the Wintergreen Interdirect Magnet School HVAC grant resolution. We have received a grant to go ahead with that. And we took possible action, we took action to an ACES school, an agency-wide calendar, and we approved that, subject to changes because so many of the schools have to comply with the district they're in. So other than that, there was no more new business and the meeting adjourned.
Mr. Vado?
Ray, could you repeat the first thing you said? First point you made?
Executive Director's report. Bassett Street, 88 Bassett Street, it's there in several places. They're doing quite a lot of... It's there in several places. They're doing quite a lot of work in renovating 88 Bassett Street. They approved the HVAC unit. They also approved the... We heard from the architect as regards to new furniture going into the building and stuff like that.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. I do not believe there was a system-wide PTAC meeting because it was canceled due to inclement weather.
That is correct.
Okay, I assume there's nothing else that you want to report, Mrs. Latour?
No, we're just still looking at a date to reschedule it, so we'll inform the board when that occurs.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Turner, do you have an update on Special Education PTAC?
Good evening, yes. So Special Education PTAC has a meeting on February 7th at 6:00 PM at the Board of Education Offices. Christina Dagiston, our school psychologist at Moses Y. Beach, will be presenting relaxation and gentle yoga for parents of special needs as well as children with special needs. So it should be a really great session.
Mr. Vado?
Are you rescheduling that support group?
So, Mr. Vado, that was actually my next statement. Thank you for the advertisement.
I thought you were done.
No, we're good to go. Great job. So as Mr. Vado said, we are having a parent support group meeting. That's this Wednesday, January 24th, 6:00 PM. And the parent support group is for parents of children with special needs. It's run by parents of children with special needs. We will be offering snacks and beverages. And it should be a really great opportunity for parents to get together, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you so much. A lot of great things happening with a lot of resources. I love hearing that. Mr. Bondi, do you have an update for food service? Okay, the next meeting is on the 30th. No further update. Dr. Thompson, do you have an update for us Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee?
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
The Wallingford Racial Justice Team, which our district is a part of, met on December 14th and our next meeting will be February 8th at the Wallingford Library.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Deering, could you please give us the CAPE report?
Sure. CAPE recently held its Legislative Breakfast. It was a great opportunity to get to meet some of the board members in other towns as well as members of the General Assembly and have discussions about important upcoming issues in education. There's a lot of discussion about the new legislation about the age to be starting kindergarten. One other thing that I want to recognize, there's a good amount of discussion about the reading waiver. So this is again, a great opportunity to thank Superintendent Belizzi, Assistant Superintendent Latour, and the rest of your team for everything you did to get that waiver for us. I think it really reflects on how we operate as a district. It's really a great statement as to everything that we're doing because not a lot of districts were granted this. So again, a big thank you to the two of you.
Thank you so much. We do not have any old business, so I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are in executive session. Thank you. We are back from our executive session, so moving along in our agenda to item number 13, the Instructional Committee. I would like to pass this over to Mr. Vado and Dr. Reed.
Okay, we have two approvals to make. The first one, 13.1, the approval of an acceptance of retirement. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept the retirement of Laurie Hines effective June 30th, 2024. Laurie Hines has been a remedial reading teacher since August 1998 for a total of 26 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Aye, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. 13.2, approval of acceptance of resignation. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept the resignation of Jennifer Sharp effective February 17th, 2024. Jennifer Sharp has been an English Language Arts teacher since August 27th, 2015.
Aye, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstention? Motion carries. I guess I should have asked if there was discussion on the motion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vado and Dr. Reed. Moving right along, we will have our Operations Committee reports. Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Reynis.
Good evening. So the Operations Committee met on... It was a special meeting on January 11th and what was supposed to be a very short meeting turned into a very good meeting. I would say it was excellent conversation. So we did talk about the budget stuff. We went over the summary of the 2% fund and some of the projects that we're getting underway and we're very excited to get those moving. Mr. Bondi went through his cafeteria reports and then we moved on to the maintenance portion of that where we did discuss at great length the condition of the Sheehan field. I appreciate Mr. Deptula's bringing the consultants on board for that evening. We did have some public comment. It was a nice conversation. It was a very good conversation and I do think, I will say that I'm very appreciative of the fact that we were able to have a very civil conversation and really get into what was happening with the field. And if you don't mind, Mr. Deptula, I am going to put you on the spot here for just a little bit. If you could just give us an update as to what the condition of the field was, because the last we left on the 11th was that there was going to be some work done to a drainage pipe.
So we... Last week, we had the... Our drain company come, the company that normally handles sanitary sewage problems. They did a great job. They ran a 2,000 PSI jet into the pipe where we found the clog and cut all those roots and all that debris out. There was... It was litter, you name it, it was in there because once the roots get down, they start... They act as a strainer and they strain everything out. We took at least two bushels of leaves out. That was the major clog. But that being said, the end of this week, either Thursday or Friday, that same company is coming back and they're going to videotape every line down there. You know, you might think there's one or two drains. There isn't. There's dozens of drains. So they're going to videotape just so I have some assurance. You know, we did find some concrete blocks. We don't know where they came from. That's a concern because that's usually an indication that something's falling apart underground, usually a catch basin or a manhole. I haven't seen that. So it'll be really interesting to see what these videos show. Well, for me, it will be. I'm not really sure anyone else is going to want to see them, but if anyone's welcome, it's public information. But we did make significant progress. As soon as we cleared that clog, the water table in the entire area dropped over eight inches. That was significant. And you know, when it was raining, pretty much any... A couple inches of rain, you know, everything is saturated right now. If you walk the grounds at Sheehan anywhere on the north end of the property, you have water coming right to the surface. That we can't really control, but this was very significant because when we got two inches of water, these manholes were filled right to the top. So there was no drainage going on on that one side. That being said, we haven't looked into the other outflow, but that one appears to be working pretty good. But we still want video of it just to make sure that we don't have some issue there. There are no wood-type plants growing over there. There's no roots, so I doubt very much that's a problem over there. You know, it's not mowed, manicured lawn, but there's no roots. So that's about it right now and we'll be talking about this again, I'm sure.
I'm sure we will, so we will...
Hopefully not.
Well, hopefully, the next rainstorm, we'll all be like, yay! And there won't be any need to have that discussion, but we do appreciate you being proactive with all the pipes as well, so thank you very much. And moving on to 14.2, this is the approval of the Food Service Balance Sheet. And I get... I'm going to make a motion to approve this. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of accepting the food service budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'm sorry, was there any discussion? No? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Reynis and Mrs. Regan. Moving to item number 15, the Administration Report. I'm going to pass this off to you, Superintendent Belizzi. You can get us started, please.
Okay, and good evening, everyone. Thank you. Before I get started on the report, I do have a few smaller donations that I just want to recognize before I forget. So at James H. Moran Middle School, the kids' lit quiz teams received a donation from Panera Bread in the value amount of $288.07, so we thank Panera Bread for that. Mrs. Christina Kylie from E.C. Stevens Elementary School, shared from East Center Market, they received a donation of $475, so we thank them for that as well. We also received for James H. Moran Middle School, $25 from Shop Right, also to go with the kids' lit quiz teams, so thank you Shop Right. And we also received from the Wallingford Garden Club, $80, and that was to the Wallingford Public Schools, the elementary schools. We donated a book, so thank you to them as well. I'd like to get into just our update report. So last Thursday evening at our special operations meeting, I did present the proposed budget for the 24-25 school year. So it was a 5.303% increase for our sustained. It included a 0.709% increase for our strategic enhancements, which included an overall request of 6.012%. Board members, I did send you an opportunity to put in your questions and feedback. First thing tomorrow morning, going out to our families and our staff, will be a copy of the presentation, along with a Google survey for staff and one for families to fill out to provide feedback or ask questions regarding the budget. We do have another Special Operations Budget Workshop meeting set up for this Thursday in person at Central Office at 6 o'clock. At that meeting, I'll go over the questions that have been submitted to us already and review the answers to those. And then we'll move into parts of the budget book, which is where we'll look at the sustained servants... Excuse me, sustained services. And Mr. Barone will go over the financial aspects of that by object code and we'll discuss that. From there, we'll continue to move on with our additional meetings and hopefully come to an agreed amount for the budget. So I also wanted to just highlight a couple of things. Today, I was at the Fire Department to watch two of our students from Parker Farms receive awards for the fire prevention poster contest. So that was wonderful. We had two students from Parker Farms. They were very excited to receive their awards today. They did some beautiful illustrations for their fire prevention, so it was a lovely event. And so I want to make sure I get their names correct here. We had Olivia Lana and Sophia Carrera, both from Parker Farms. And I also wanted to highlight that at Rock Hill, we had a great... We have a grade four student, Beau, who is going to go on to Nationals for our Invention Convention student. And so on Friday, Rob Himarin from NBC News, The Weatherman, came down and interviewed him. And so that was very exciting and so it was a wonderful opportunity for him as well and to highlight the great things that are happening here in Wallingford. So just wanted to highlight just a few things that are happening that are great news to share. And I'm going to pass it on to Mrs. Latour, who's going to talk about our screening that occurred today for our kindergarten students who will not be five by the age of September 1st, so she can give some details about how that went today.
Superintendent Belizzi, I'm sorry, Mrs. Latour. Ms. Passeretti just had a quick question.
Yes, sure. Quick question. You mentioned a survey going out to the staff and families for the budget. When will we get a chance to see those?
So it's going to go out tomorrow morning and so they'll have until next Monday at 9:00 AM to complete that, and so I'll be sure to share that. It'll download into a Google form, so I can start answering some of the questions and start of sharing some of those. And I'll have some of those available for this coming Thursday as well, but it will be open until the following Monday.
Okay, thank you.
So then I'll share again at the next workshop that we'll have. Good question, thank you.
Another quick question. Since you were talking about how The Weatherman came, was there also not a story about the Lyman Hall culinary program and what's right with our schools?
Yes.
I saw that on the news and I absolutely loved it.
Yes, it was a phenomenal story. So yes, that was great. It did highlight Lyman Hall, our culinary area there, and so I did get to share that with all of you, which is a wonderful opportunity for them to highlight all the wonderful things that are happening there. So yes, thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Anything else?
Hi.
Go ahead, take it away.
So as I spoke last month at our board meeting, student registration for the 24-25 school year opened when we got back from the holiday break. And already, we have seen numerous inquiries into kindergarten, which, as you know, we track very, very closely in terms of sectioning because there are grade level, that is the most unknown. Complicating that is the new start date for kindergarten. So this evening, we had 22 students come to do the assessment for early entrance to kindergarten. So all around town, in all of our school newsletters, on our website, everywhere we can think of posting our flyer with the QR code, we have flyers for not only kids who are five as of September 1st, which is the new legislation, to go directly into our school to start registering. We also have a link that is there for families to request a screening for early entrance. So currently, as I said, we had 22 kids come in today, which is all of them that have requested so far. They went through the screening process with the help of many of our kindergarten teachers in district. We had a speech and language pathologist there, school social worker, school psychologist. We screened our students. Our families will get the results within the next two weeks. And we will continue to screen through the remainder of the winter and spring and probably summer as families make the decision that they feel is in the right interest of their child on whether or not they would like their child to start school early. And so, you know, parents were lovely, the kids were great. It really... It was a fun afternoon. And what we'll probably do at this point actually is kind of collect our names and then do a screening a month if we have enough kids to warrant the night hours. If not, we'll send them directly to the schools. Our existing preschoolers who are in that little date range will be done by their own preschool teachers. And our preschool coordinator, Liz Gaffney, is already communicating with the building principals and the preschool teachers to have that happen during the school day.
Reed?
So speaking of budget also, you're keeping obviously all of this in mind as you're moving forward to who you're going to need and how you're going to need it in numbers.
Yep. Yeah. And the kindergarten part is, it happens every year and it's the most variable, so we are watching those numbers every month and in the summer, every week. And I'll pass it over to Mrs. Turner.
Ms. Passeretti, did you have a question?
Sorry?
How did you develop the assessment for the students?
That's a good question. We did not develop it ourselves. We're using a nationally-normed assessment that we actually use currently in our preschools. It is the Speed Dial and it looks at the domains of motor, language, early literacy, early numeracy. It assesses the students in a one-on-one situation. It takes about 20 minutes. And it looks at the students' results and compares it to peers across the nation of the same chronological age, which is important because at this developmental age, every month counts. And so we'll use that to guide some of our decision-making once we see how the results come in.
One more question. If a student does not pass the assessment... You know what I'm going to ask, you don't?
Yeah, I do. So it's not as much as a pass/fail on this particular assessment.
Will they get to do it again?
Well, no. So it looks at the developmental readiness of the student and it provides some insight into areas of strength and then areas that are potential areas for growth. And we'll look at that in discussion with expectations for kindergarten and then certainly provide our recommendation to parents. This isn't easy for families. The change of legislation came kind of... It was late. It was in the spring. And so we want to ensure that the students who are starting in that early window have the best opportunity to start kindergarten and be successful. So if there are areas on this particular assessment that might be areas for growth, we're going to want to have those conversations with families. And due to the small number of kids being screened at this time, we'll be able to have those conversations if necessary.
Mr. Vado?
How long is the assessment? How long does it take?
It takes about 20 to 25 minutes.
And who gives the assessment?
Our kindergarten teachers are.
Now, can they...
It's not an assessment you can study for.
No, I don't...
Okay.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, obviously, there are probably certain objectives that you'd like a child to meet to pass this assessment. But let's say a teacher... But let's say a teacher has this feeling that maybe the child was too shy that day or whatever. Can they make a subjective decision? I don't know if I used the right word, subjective, but you know what I'm trying to say.
Right. So, you know, throughout the course of the screening, just to be very, very clear, the decision isn't made at the screening time. They're collecting the data for that. And then we're looking at how, across the norms, the student is ranking in from a percentile standpoint. So, if a student is falling out at the 75th percentile or higher, that tells a story. If a student's falling out at the second percentile, that's telling a different story. I think it's important and extremely valuable as we look at where the assessment results fall, that we involve our families in the conversation if we do have a student who exhibited reticence or shyness or, you know, any indicator that we might feel contributed to their overall score. And when the parents receive the results, and they will, along with our recommendation, the parents will have an opportunity to have a conversation with us, and we'll continue to go from there. You know, this is... It's not, and, you know, these are small children who came to Central Office today, a place they don't know. And they were so cute, and very willing. But, you know, it's a unique, different scenario for them. So, we understand that and we know that. And we'll continue to have conversations with families as we need to.
Follow-up. I do like the fact they're using the word "recommendation." It's a process. It's a research-based process, and it's a recommendation. Continue conversation with families. I appreciate all of that.
Anyone have anything else?
I very much appreciate, as we're navigating this for the first time, being able to go into it with very open and basically a reevalutative process, seeing what is working and just being able to have those open conversations. I can imagine that's very reassuring to parents who got this information, to quote you, "pretty late in the game." And so, just for planning, I think that that's probably giving them a little bit of an ability to breathe easier. So, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
So, for Champion Segways, our preschool lottery is open. And Mrs. Latour did let the parents know of the students who came today, that it is open and recommended, you know, just as a backup. It is something to consider. So, the lottery is open until February 24th. The children must be three by September 1st to be in the three-year-old program and four by September 1st to be in the four-year-old program. You can find that registration, or the lottery registration on the Registration tab, as well as the Preschool tab underneath Family. And that lottery will be drawn in March. Third, fifth, and seventh graders will take the LSATs the week of February 5th and February 12th. The LSATs are administered to all students as a component of our gifted identification process. A letter will be going home to families this week in terms of what the process is, so they have that information. Frank Piccone, who's been working in our district for a couple of years now, from Sotari, is presenting a virtual workshop on Thursday, January 25th. The workshop is called "The Self-Driven Child." The session teaches parents some important skills that can keep their children on the best path. Resiliency is a key quality in prevention of high-risk and negative behaviors. The training is based on the book "The Self-Driven Child: The Science and Sense of Giving Your Kids More Control Over Their Lives." So, I do recommend that, if you're available, that parents sign up for this workshop. Frank is amazing, and his workshops are really, really well-received. The Olbricht Boys and Girls Club, through the 21st Century Grant, works very closely with Parker Farms and Cook Hill. They have open slots in both, for both schools in their after-school program. And this after-school program provides children who are economically disadvantaged free after-school care. And in that, they work on academic enrichment, socialization. They do some STEM experiments, as well as remediation. Reach out to Mrs. Joestor or Mrs. Segnella if your family is interested in one of these slots. That's all I have.
Yes, Mr. Vado?
I... I know this parent group is so important. I mean, how are we advertising it? I know, was it on Facebook, I think, at one time?
Yes, so, we put it on Facebook. We'll be sending it out, back out on Parents Square tomorrow to all families. Mr. Piccone is focusing on Sheen this year, so I know Sheen has been advertising heavily through their families and their PTO and PTAC, as well as system-wide PTAC. So, those are the avenues that we're doing right now.
Yes, Mrs. Regan?
I just wanted to ask a question about preschool. How many slots do we have?
It's hard to tell how many slots we have. We have to first look at how many students are returning. So, for a four-year-old program, all of our current threes who want to return next year will get a slot. And then we'll look at how many open slots we have after that. And four-year-olds will be the same process this year. It's a little bit different. But if we have any returning four-year-olds because they did not turn the age at the, before September 1st, they will have a slot next year as well.
Okay, so for new three-year-olds coming in, those are just brand-new slots? Or how do you, how do you work that? I understand three to four, or people that aren't qualifying for kindergarten. But how about new people trying to get into the three-year-olds?
Into three-year-old programs. So, with our three-year-old program, it's a little bit different, because we have to have spaces for our children who turn three through birth to three. It's more of a special education program with the three-year-olds, so it's not predictable. So, what we'll do is, right now, Liz Gaffney, the preschool coordinator, and I are working closely, looking at all of our birth-to-three reports. We get a report every day of students that are, or children that are in the process. So, we'll have a good gauge of how many students we'll have. And then we will backfill typical slots into the available preschool classes that we have. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And we will have more students, because there are students who will not be able to go to the four-year-old program next year. They do not have flexibility. They will need to stay in the three-year-old program if they're not four before September 1st.
Is there any discussion about universal pre-K for Connecticut? And if we're prepared at all, if that does come?
So, in terms of, on a state level, I'm actually on a committee right now who is discussing heavily universal preschool. I know that it is something that's in conversations, but it's a huge financial burden. I know Mrs. Latour, Mrs. Belizzi, and I actually speak about universal preschool all the time. It is a dream of ours. But I'll be honest, space, you know, is an issue if we were to do universal preschool. But we are working with local community preschools to really support them in applying what we're doing in our schools. So, it's actually, we're really working toward that.
Thank you.
Everyone good? Thank you so... Oh, Mr. Ross.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Roscoe on her first meeting as the chairman of the board. Well done.
Appreciate that, Mr. Ross. Thank you so much. Just trying to go through. Moving to exit 16, excuse me. Now you got me all flustered. Moving to number 16 on our agenda, I have some announcements. It is budget season, as you've been hearing. So, several of these meetings that I am going to announce are going to be related to the budget. The first one is coming up this Thursday on the 25th. A Special Operations Budget Meeting, which will be held at the Board of Education Conference Room at 6:00 PM. On Monday, January 29th, an additional Special Operations Budget Workshop, again, at the Board of Ed Conference Rooms at 6:00 PM. And Thursday, February 1st, Special Operations Budget Meeting, if we need it. Maybe we won't. 6:00 PM at the Board of Education Conference Room. And then on Monday, February 5th, we have our Instructional Committee, which will be via Google Meet at 6:00 PM. If needed, oh, excuse me. On Thursday, February 8th, we have our orientation for our Board of Ed members. This is a special meeting at the Board of Education Conference Room at 6:00 PM. On Monday, February 12th, we have our Operations Committee meeting via Google Meet. That is at 6:00 PM. And on Thursday, February 15th, if needed, Special Operations Budget Meeting, which would again be at 6:00 PM in the Board of Ed Conference Room. The date of our next meeting, held here in the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers, is going to be Monday, February 26th at 6:30 PM.